Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible and limited.
Justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Quorum is present for the City Council, Successor Agency, and Housing Authority.
Public comment. Before I go to public comment, I'm going to... Every month, I read the rules of the quorum, and so we keep them foremost in our minds. In compliance with the Ralph M. Brown Act and to further facilitate feedback, public comment is encouraged at meetings of the City Council and all its agencies in accordance with the following rules. Please note, members of the public are encouraged to contact the city manager or respective operating department directors first before making service requests or service complaints directly to the council. At the beginning of each meeting for public comment, comments are not to exceed one minute of length, and it's permitted to address one or more closed-session items scheduled in the agenda prior to members of the council convening deliberations in public. That time is passed for closed session. In open session, public comment is permitted not to exceed a total of three minutes in length regarding one or more agenda items excluding closed-session items, opening ceremonies items, setting of public hearings, and items to be considered as part of a public hearing. Public comment is not permitted on any scheduled closed or open session, open agenda item or public hearing in the event this item has been pulled from the agenda, postponed, or rescheduled for another day. Public comment not to exceed one minute in length is permitted for each scheduled public hearing item on the agenda. At the conclusion of the City Council meeting prior to its adjournment, public comment is permitted not to exceed one minute in length on any items of interest to the public and within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the City Council. The mayor or presiding officer of the meeting in his or her absence may, at his or her discretion, restrict or grant additional speaker time based on such considerations as agenda length, volume of speakers, complexity of the item, or the looming threat of the loss of a quorum. The mayor or presiding officer make requests that a spokesperson be chosen by a group of persons to address the council when a group of persons wish to comment on the same subject matter. Speakers are not permitted to cede their time or any portion thereof to another speaker. The mayor or presiding officer of the meeting may invoke the use of speaker cards at any time used as such card is deemed necessary to facilitate the orderly process of permitting public comment. All public comment is to be directed to the mayor or the presiding officer and not to individual members of the public or any single council, board, or commission member unless in response to a question from that member. Any person making public comment who wishes to provide written or other materials to the mayor and council must first request permission to approach the dais. If and when permission is granted, materials shall be delivered first to the city clerk for distribution. Comments must be civil and respectful when addressing other members of the public, the mayor, and council members. No person attending a public meeting shall engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct. Members of the audience and speakers shall not wear display signs, placards, banners, hats, costumes, or other similar items at any time in the council chambers that obstruct the view of the legislative body or audience members or which create sufficient disruption to impede the orderly conduct of the meeting or to intimidate other attendees of the meetings. Persons making public comment should not routinely expect to receive answers to questions posed during their remarks, although that may happen. Unlike Town Hall, Neighborhood Block, and other meetings and gatherings, which are more conducive to question-and-answer format, City Council meetings are business meetings. They do the business of 110,000 residents of the city. In many cases, staff will be available to take speaker questions and contact information and respond in a timely manner. So now with that, anyone who has public comment for an item on the agenda may do so at this time.
Very careful what I say. I want this transit connector done. But I want it fair. The mayor has done an excellent job.
You are off such a good start, Marvin.
We see the same page. It took a long time to get here. Most consequential mayor in history of this city. And some of the evil stuff y'all doing, ooh. Mayor, you have my support. 110%. I'm going to go get me some good coffee. I'm not going to violate the rules. Gloria Gray, I love you. I do you. I can always find you where I need you. I hope that will extend. You guys have a great afternoon.
Is there any other public comment?
There should be. But do it at your own will. That's what I mean.
With that, we'll close public comment. Item 1, CSA 1 and H1.
Want register.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, successor agency members, and housing authority members. Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Butts.
Aye. PH1.
Public hearing... The next scheduled matter, Mayor, is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending or repealing various municipal code sections regulating peddling, soliciting, and sidewalk vending, and adding a new Article 13 to Chapter 8 of the municipal code to comply with the changes in the state law.
Continue this public hearing to the meeting of June 20, 2023, at 2:00 p.m. Madam City Clerk, what is the next scheduled matter?
Yes, Mayor, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to receive public comments on a priority community and housing needs in preparation of the City of Inglewood's 2023 through 2024 Annual Action Plan.
Has the notice of this hearing been given in the time, form, and manner as required by law? And do you have an affidavit on file?
Yes, Mayor, notice has been given, and the affidavit is on file.
Madam Clerk, have any other communications been received on the matter?
No, Mayor, no communications have been received.
Mr. City Manager, is there a staff report?
There is a staff report, sir. Mr. Roberto Chavez will be giving the staff report. He's the program's manager.
Welcome, Mr. Chavez.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, members of the public. Thank you for your time and attention. Yes, the recommendation today is that we open a public hearing to receive input from the community on the community priority needs and housing needs in preparation for the 2023 Annual Action Plan. I prepared a brief, concise slideshow to kind of guide us through the information on the presentation. The stuff we'll be going over is the types of funding, primary objectives, the budget.
Uh-uh, the little red light's out, so you did it too well. Uh-uh. We planned it this way, don't be fooled.
Louis, Louis, Louis.
Thanks, Louis.
And he's an engineer.
There we go.
Thank you, thank you. Mic check, mic check. All right, we're good. As I was saying, we're going to go over some types of funding, primary objectives of the funding, the budget, eligible activities for the program, community survey, questions and answers. So the type of funding. So I'll just summarize. The city receives two types of grant fundings from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Those are Community Development Block Grant Funds, which are CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Act, often referred to as HOME. So the primary objective is to benefit extremely low, very low, and low-income persons, to remove slum and blith conditions from low-income areas. So here are some income limits that are illustrated for, you know, maximum incomes that the program may assist. Goes all the way up to the low to moderate 80% income bracket. So this next matrix describes the year-over-year funding for both programs. In the middle column, you have the CDBG funding. I'm sorry, the top column is CDBG funding. The column under that represents the HOME funding. And you have some totals at the very bottom. As you can see, there's some slight differences in year-over-year funding, and we'll kind of touch on those in this next slide. So this matrix or graph shows the year-over-year funding for both programs. In light blue, you have the CDBG funding. In darker blue, you have the HOME funding. As you can see, CDBG is slightly lower, down 1.5%, and HOME is down about 9.7%. And that changes from year to year depending on how many jurisdictions throughout the country are participating in the two programs. CDBG program. So basically, it gives you an overview of what the program can be used for, right? It has like a model. Support community development activities to build stronger, more resilient communities. Moving right along. The CDBG program is an entitlement program. Provides annual grants on a formula basis, as described earlier, to entitlement cities like the City of Inglewood. Proposed budget for CDBG in '23 and '24. This graph kind of illustrates where the funding will go. As you can see, most of the funding goes to eligible activities, at 65%. About 15% goes to public service, and about 20% goes to administration and administrative program. Here are some eligible activities. Looking around the community, you can probably see some improvements going on. One of the most popular is a minor home rehab program. Park facilities improvement. You'll see some parks have been remodeled or constructed throughout the city. Code enforcement. And on the public service side, you have the Senior Meals Program, summer camps, and fair housing counseling, just to mention a few. CDBG projects. So here's the current year's allocation. We allocated about half a million dollars towards minor home repair, very popular program, park infrastructure program, another half a million, code enforcement at about $300,000. Moving right along. And for public services, we have senior meals and fair housing counseling, which is very necessary in this time of day where landlords and tenants are needing a lot of guidance in certain tenant-related issues. The HOME program. Similar to CDBG, but this program kind of is really designed to like help with homeownership, maybe some rental assistance, and acquisition of affordable housing and development of affordable housing. Moving right along. And here's how we propose to break out the next fiscal year's budget, around 75% for eligible activities. And administration will be around 10%. And the CHODO, which is a community housing development organization, will be at about 15%. Next slide. So here are some eligible activities we just described. Construction of new housing, rehabilitation of existing housing, or rental assistance. And here is the current allocation of the HOME program. We've done some... Set aside some for rental assistance, some CHODO funding, and HOME administration. There is a survey that is still available, and we encourage the public to click on the link and fill out the community survey that's available until June 9. We appreciate your participation. Here are the community program staff that you can reach out to if you're interested. And with that, we'll go ahead and take public comments.
Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Hearing no comment, are there any questions? You guys, slow down. Could we have questions from the council? Oh, go ahead, headman, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. My name is Cheryl Matthews, and I am a community stakeholder here in the city. And for the funding that is available, have the funds already been allocated for this year to the constituents in the city?
Go ahead with your comments, ma'am, and we'll answer at the end.
Okay, all right. Well, that's the main thing. And if they have not been allocated, are there applications and a way for people to still get those funds available?
Okay, so her question was, have the funds been allocated? Because I don't know that that microphone is functional right now. And if not, how would you get in a queue or line to do so?
Sure, some of the funding is funded on an ongoing basis with different contracts that are multi-year contracts. But when funding is made available, the city will put out a request for proposals so that individuals or businesses can apply for this funding.
Okay, ma'am, did I answer your question? Okay, all right. Is there any other public comment? Okay, with that, we'll close public comment. Is there any questions from the council?
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. I know that you gave information about public input, things that you had reached out to the public. So I do encourage my constituents in my district to continue to give the input because it's very important regarding our housing needs. But I noticed that each year, the funding was dwindling each year. And so how is staff going to address that particular issue?
Okay, yeah, this is something that historically, these programs have kind of... The funding has gone down historically. I agree with you. And sometimes, there's different ways to offset those funding sources that are dwindling, so to speak. But yeah, we have... Since I've been here, it's remained pretty steady. So, I mean, you can cut back on certain programs that are supported by this funding. That's a way to kind of alleviate the funding, you know, impacts.
And when you receive information from the public and you create this document and you attach funding to each particular section, so are you saying that you move funds to address those needs? Is that what you're saying?
If it's feasible, then that's something we can consider, but it's...
No other outside funding that you look at?
Well, there are other grants that we go after to supplement different programs. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilman Padilla.
So just for clarification. So the CDBG and HOME funds, the ones you're talking about, are specific for the rehabbing or, let's say, programs for folks that need meals, for the seniors? So each one has their own guidelines that are preset that we all have to abide by and by. We all, meaning all the cities that have this opportunity, correct?
That is correct.
And so away from that, we, and I know you and other department heads, get outside funding.
Yes, absolutely.
To help us offset something that maybe we're not able to do through the CDBG and HOME funding.
Right, the city can always contribute general funds to supplement programs.
Or we go out and look for outside funding sources.
Absolutely.
You know, to help us with that. And then the income brackets that you showed, those are preset.
Yes, and they change every year. They're published by the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
And that's... I was going to ask you, we don't set that.
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted that for clarification. I don't want people to think, oh, Inglewood's setting these housing, you know, brackets. We don't, those are preset. And so...
Go ahead.
No, and so, you know, again, we always encourage our residents and business folks, anybody that can take advantage of these opportunities to do so, to apply for them, you know? And we, as a city and council members, we try to make sure we keep our residents and folks informed when these opportunities present themselves. And that's why I think we all have newsletters, and our little city puts it on the city website. We do the community meetings. All these things are done as a way to keep the community informed about these opportunities. So I want to thank you, Mr. Chavez, for a well-done presentation and also your staff report.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Falk, your six-four.
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation. I just have one quick question for you. On the minor home repair, can you share with our residents here today a little bit more about how that program works? Because I know it's really important. We do get requests, especially from seniors. We have a lot of seniors in the City of Inglewood. Just a little bit more about how that works and how that benefits residents? Because I know it's a really important piece of this project.
Absolutely, thank you for that question. Yes, that program is geared to benefit folks that are under that moderate income, low to moderate income household threshold. They have to apply. We currently have a servicer that helps us administer that program. It's the Los Angeles Habitat for Humanity. So they're administering it. And just as an example, in the last year, we helped about 24 households conduct minor home repairs on their home. Could be roofs, could be some electrical, maybe some code compliance issues. And those are all repaired and paid for through the program. The grant is up to $15,000 per household if they qualify, yes.
How do our residents that are hearing this now, how do they try and get into the program? What's the fastest way for them? I know some residents right now that would benefit from this information.
Sure, so there's... On our website, there's a link where they can click on it and get all the contact information for the Habitat for Humanity and put their name on the waiting list. There is unfortunately a waiting list whenever there's programs like this. Very popular. We probably have about 150 folks on the waiting list right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, just to sum it up, the city's a pass-through for these funds, is that right?
That is correct.
And the funds generate the federal level. Sometimes they're pass-through through the state. And so what we do is, we take what we get and we try to get more, is that right?
That is correct.
Simplest way to do it. The best way for people to remain informed is to the availability is to go to www... That's citiofinglewood.org. We have a site for that, right?
That is correct.
So nobody has to search, wonder. That's just what you do. So if you really want to know accessibility to these funds, go to the Inglewood website. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to the consent counter, items 2, 3, 9. Unless anyone on the council has a question on any of the items.
Two through 10.
Two through... Oh, I'm sorry, is there another page?
Two through 11.
Two through 11.
Well, there we go.
Four eleven.
That's why there's a bunch of us up here.
And item four and five, please.
Okay, so we're going to go through items 2 through 11, and we're going to pull items four and five briefly. So is there motion for 2 through 11?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers, Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. You had a question on item four.
Item three. Three and four.
Did I hear four and five?
I thought it was four and five. She said four and five.
Okay, so now we'll have to revote if we do that, Councilwoman, because you said four and five.
Okay, four and five is the library services. I'll do those two.
All right, all right, so your question on item four?
Yeah. Both has to do with library services remodeling and so forth. So my question is the timeframe for both of these projects. One is in my area in Morningside Park. I think item four is Morningside Park. What is the timeframe for that one?
Hardger Singh can answer your questions.
So for Morningside Park, the work would basically start shortly after this meeting if it's approved. And that's basically about 150 days worth of construction, which would bring us up through the end of the year. And then we would be prepared to open that library back up to the public.
So what's your timeframe again? What are you estimating for every?
150 days, which means around December, January, this library would reopen to the public.
Okay, and it has not been open in the past, correct?
It's been shut down because there's some issues with the...
Best is, it's been shut down for years.
Correct.
Yes, it has, for years, yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, that's good news that it will be reopening with renovations. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, is there motion for four and five?
So moved. Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers, Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. DR1.
Staff report recommending that the mayor and council members adopt a resolution amending the 2022 through 2023 fiscal year budget to add two payroll technicians and upgrade one part-time staff assistant to full-time in the police department.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers, Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. DR2.
Staff report recommending that the mayor and council members adopt a resolution, one, approving the execution of an entrance and two, the agreement between California Department of Transportation and the City of Inglewood in an amount not to exceed $9 million, and two, authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement with Caltrans on behalf of the City of Inglewood.
Move one and two.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers, Gray.
I do have a statement question.
All right.
Before we vote. I just want to make sure that the public has realized that this, the $9 million is a grant from the state. It's a pass-through money from the state to the Caltrans and the city agreement. And with that, I will vote aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. SPH1.
Staff report requesting that a public hearing be set to consider General Plan Amendments 2022-002 for the adoption of the safety element.
That's a public hearing for June 20, 2023. A1.
There's a request for authorization for the city to sign the confidentiality agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers, Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
Second item, CS2, was Eduardo Starks versus the City of Inglewood. To that, there's a request for motion to authorize settlement in that matter.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers, Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
The third item, Mayor, is the claim of the Automobile Club of California... Excuse me, Automobile Club. And as to that, it's a claim, and there's a request for motion to settle that matter also.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers, Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. A2.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no other oral reports from the city attorney's office.
Thank you. CM1.
No report, sir.
Thank you, Ms. City Manager. CC1.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just wanted to give thanks to all of our city employees for their love and support on the passing of my mother. A special thank you to Councilwoman Morales for his extension to my family with the food. And then to Councilwoman Falk, thank you so much for your presence at my mother's service on this past Saturday. So thank you so much, Mayor. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Thank you. Inglewood Housing Authority is in session. HP, SPH one.
Staff report requesting that a public hearing be set to consider the Inglewood Housing Authority one-year agency plan and related certifications.
Set the public hearing for June 20th, 2023. Adjourn the Housing Authority. We're now at appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Councilwoman Goya Gray nominates, and I appoint Carolyn Fowler to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Second.
Yeah, well, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Gray has to move concurrently.
Yeah, she has to move concurrently.
I move the item.
No, no, move concurrently.
Move concurrently.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Councilwoman Gray nominates, and I, the mayor, appoint Richard Galendo to the Parking and Traffic Commission for District One seat. This is where you move concurrently. Move concurrently. There you go.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. So now, with that, we move to public comments. Any persons wishing to address the city council on any matter connected with city business that elsewhere considered on the agenda may do so at this time. Persons with complaints regarding city management or departmental operations are requested to submit these complaints first to the city manager for a resolution. One minute. Are there any public comments?
Carolyn Fowler, Board District One. I want to thank my council member and the mayor and the other council members.
We can't hear you.
Oh. Is it testing?
It's not on.
It's not on. Okay.
It is on. Just pick it up and put it. There you go.
Okay, there we go.
There you go.
Okay, here we go.
That's what I'm used to.
Okay, Carolyn Fowler, Board District One. I want to thank my council member Gray, as well as the mayor, Padilla, and Falk for this opportunity to serve on the planning commission. I look forward to that opportunity. I've been a life of service for quite a while. I'm not going to tell that age. But I wanted to thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Welcome. Is there any other public comment? Oh, my goodness. Okay. Pinky, this must be important.
Oh, my God. I want to say good afternoon to all of you. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak at this time. Hello to Mayor Butts, councilperson, and other department heads. My name is Pinky Nichols, and I'm from Copperwood. My concern at this time is La Cienega Boulevard. La Cienega starting from Slauson all the way down to Centinela, which is unsightly. It is a fire hazard. It is littered with dry trash and also dried bushes. It's a disgrace because people coming into Inglewood, they don't look at Los Angeles, they look at Inglewood. They don't know nothing about Los Angeles. High Celine Dara and Inglewood have been picking up this trash. That is every first Saturday, which is a danger to the people who are picking up this trash. So can you still hear me?
Oh, you better believe we can hear you. They can hear you like down on Century.
It is, it is really a danger to the people to pick up this trash. And I'm a part of this trash pickup. Can you, as Inglewood leaders, please help us in some way?
Okay.
I have contacted Mayor Bass, Councilwoman Parks, but they're really not concerned about it. And people doesn't know that La Cienega belonged to Los Angeles rather than to Inglewood.
Pinky, you're at time.
I have, and I haven't omitted anybody. I have talked to my councilperson also.
Okay, Pinky, you're, Pinky, you're at time now.
My time is up?
Yes, your time's up.
Oh, my God.
Great. You know, just briefly, you know, this is a longstanding issue. I and Councilman Padilla have been in contact with the city of Los Angeles. We've even gone so far as to have our city resources do the cleanup on the LA side of La Tierra. And so the only solution I see at this point is for us to go on and ex, and ex Los Angeles and be done with it. All right? That's a joke, Pinky. Don't, don't hold me to that, all right?
Mr. Mayor.
Don't hold me to that. Go ahead.
I do have a comment real quick. Councilman Padilla and I have been meeting with the city of Los Angeles. They do have a project proposed down La Cienega, which is to clean up the area as far as their hardscape goes and their landscaping. Let's just hope they can maintain it.
All right. Okay, and with that, we'll close public comment. We'll go to council comments. Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to congratulate Carolyn Fowler and Richard Galendo as commissioners on, Carolyn, on the planning commission and Richard on the traffic. A couple of weeks ago, the mayor approved or appointed, and I concurred, the appointment of Alita, I believe Metcalf, and Lee Denman. To, Alita was to the Arts Commission, and Lee was to Parks. So congratulate my commissioners. A couple of events that I did attend, US Vets had a memorial event about a week ago, and it was a great event. And I thanked the executive director, Jessica Golson, for inviting me. The council was there, members and the mayor was there. Great program. There was a speaker who had survived and captured, and it was just an amazing story that he told about survival. And it was a great, it was a great seeing the US Vets there because I used to attend there many years ago in terms of supporting them when I was, as a member of the Moata Board. But it was a great event. Also, the city of Inglewood had a memorial event this past memorial holiday, and I did attend along with the mayor and the council, another great speaker, and their residents who came out. It was just an honor to be there to remember those who have fallen, who have fallen for our freedom in this country. And so it's always a moving day to recognize those. And I always tell folks, it's not just the day to remember people, but it's something we should remember them always. It's something we should never forget. Also, I held a town hall meeting, June 1st, my first town hall meeting. There was about 150 people attended, so I was very, very pleased. But it was really designed to invite city department heads to come out and share their, the type of services that they provide to the, to the residents here and to hear from the residents, you know, not only their concerns, but to express, you know, how they felt about the services. So I want to thank everyone from the city who was there. Chris Jackson, who was at, well, the mayor, of course, was there, and my city council members. So I thank all of them for being there. Senator Bradwood was there. And there's someone, I shouldn't start naming folks, since I only have a few minutes, but I will. The school board, county administrator, Dr. Morris was there, gave a great presentation of what was happening there. We had Chris Jackson, also Betty Griffith and Sabrina Barnes, and Yekima was there. All of them. Thank you very much for being there. But thank you to the residents. It was a great town hall meeting. It lasted for over three hours. It went past the time. And I want to thank the videographer, the person who videotaped it. Find the note that says their names, because I really appreciate Thomas Bun, Carlos Orozco, Katie Sellers, and Alani Perkins. They were great videotaping the event. It was live stream, which was wonderful because I do believe in transparency and also on YouTube. So if you missed it, go on YouTube and see it. I do plan to have another one in about three months.
Okay, it's flashing.
All right, just one. I did go to Cinder's event this morning, okay? And it was a great event for the businesses on Market Street. So with that, thank you very much.
All right. Councilman Padilla, District two.
I'm going to try and keep mine under three minutes, Mayor. It's a struggle. You know, you've already told me. But anyway, it is. Because, you know, we have so many good things that we're doing here in the city of Inglewood.
Right.
And we do it all for our residents, our business owners. You know, Inglewood is a new city, you know, and, you know, we're all very proud, and we like to boast about it. And so it's just because we're just, the pride, right? So I want to take an opportunity again to thank, you know, my colleagues on the council. Both of them did town hall meetings last week. Dion did hers. Gloria did hers. I mean, great community participation. So thank you both for being, being so engaged with everyone. Really appreciate it. I want to take a chance now, an opportunity, rather, to invite everybody this coming Saturday morning from 9:00 to 11:30, Fire Station 172 at Centinela and Hyde Park. I'm doing a fire appreciation pancake breakfast. It's our opportunity to come by and say thank you. Thank you to our firefighting personnel, all the men and women that risk it every single day. And folks say, but you're a police officer. What about the cops? The cops are going to be there too, you know? So, so trust me, they will be there. And in August, we do National Night Out for the police department. And so Cinder's back there, and she'll be doing it again this year. And so that's in August. But this Saturday, come out for some delicious pancakes, sausages, more importantly, to say thank you to all our firefighter personnel. And June 24th, there's this new, it's not a new sport, but it is new to me. It's called pickleball. You know, and you hear all about pickleball, and, and I thought it was like paddle tennis, but it's not. It's even better and a lot more fun. We're doing a pickleball clinic to expose our community to pickleball. We have a great tennis facility at Vincent Park, you know, great programs. But now we want to continue to bring pickleball to North Park. So that's on June 24th. There's a flyer from 10 to 12. Come on down. After you're through playing pickleball, Dion will be touching about her event on that same day starting at noon. So you can go from the pickleball to go celebrate at the event at Vincent Park. So with that, I think I'm under three minutes, Mayor.
They haven't started flashing yet.
Damn. Hold on. How much more time I got? Thank you, everybody. Have a great week.
Thank you. Councilwoman Falk, District four.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate Carolyn Fowler on her appointment. She's going to be fabulous. I already know that. I know her very well, and she is a great pick. So congratulations to you. Also, I too want to acknowledge our city clerk's mother's passing. You had a beautiful ceremony, home-going service for your mother, and I'm just happy I was there to be able to support you. I also had a town hall on May 31st, and it went really, really well. It's great to be able to connect with the residents and be able to just kind of hear the concerns and also present information about what's happening in the city of Inglewood, because there's so much happening. Really quick, I want to acknowledge our presenters. And first of all, I'd like to acknowledge the mayor and our council members that came out to support the event. Lieutenant Meeks, Christopher Jackson, Dr. James Morris, Sean Uno, I got his name wrong, Louis Adwell, Janelle Hartley, Lisa Truffalletti, and Bridget Calderon, as well as our ITC staff. I appreciate you guys so much. Also, I want to acknowledge that we have a new church in District Four. It's called Illuminate Church, and they are meeting on the campus of Century Charter School. It's a new startup church, and as you can see, that's the pastor. He's young and vibrant. His wife, she's an assistant pastor. And so they're meeting every Sunday. If you're looking for something new and fresh and different, please come out and support them. Or if not, just come out for one time and support them. They're just wonderful. Pastor Jason and his wife is Stacy Shepherd. So they just launched, congratulations to them on their new church. And then also, as Councilmember Padilla was saying, that we will be having on June 24th, the city of Inglewood is having our first music festival. It's going to be going down at Darby Park, and it is going to be wonderful. You can see the list of performers that's going to be there. And it's going to be a great event. So it's a free event. Get your picnic basket, you know, come out in your white. We're going to make it a white party. It's going to be lots of fun. Just come out for a good, fun day, another great day in the city of Inglewood. And this is a benefit concert. The funds that we raise for ticket sales will be benefiting Inglewood Unified School District. And we're going to, yes, thank you. We're going to set a goal, and whatever, whatever money we come up with, that's what we're going to try and figure out what the best way we can benefit those kids. So also, I'm going to go ahead and close. I have...
Flashing.
No, no, time to go. I want to close, and really quick, the family is here for Seeing the Fight. It is the grandmother of my deputy, Malcolm Patton, and she was 91 years old. I want to acknowledge her and make sure that the family knows that we support her. And the city of Inglewood is there for her. I knew her very well. She was a wonderful woman. So our condolences to the family. Thank you, Mayor.
Could you give me the name again?
Sina Fite. Sina, Sina Fite, S E N A. Last name is F I T E.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
The pressure is on. Ela Morales won't be here today. He's a little under the weather, and so I will absorb at the time. Okay, so anyway, we had the graduation this morning for Morningside High out at El Camino College. Very robust attendance. Great day for the kids. We, the district has had its struggles for probably the last 11 years. However, the dedication and commitment of the teachers and the staff and the administrators has been definitely awe-inspiring. And you could not tell that there was anything wrong from this event today. The parents were thrilled and were very proud. I made the observation that the kids graduating from this class of 2023 were in kindergarten when I became the mayor. So they're all my kids, and I'm proud of them, and I let them know that. We, I was selected for the eighth consecutive year by the LA Business Journal as one of the top 500 leaders in the Los Angeles County. And so myself and three other members of the county are in a very unique club that have been selected every year that they've been making that publication. Let's see. Now, what is this? Oh, that's, okay, that's the Dion Falkstown Hall meeting. I couldn't tell it from the back. And it was well-attended, and a lot of good information passed out. Last picture that flashed so briefly, those are members from Congresswoman Feinstein's staff as we talked about attaining more grants for the city of Inglewood. And so the US Vets that I think Congresswoman Gray already talked about, their event was awe-inspiring as usual. And they had a great speaker. I forget the captain's name. He was a prisoner of war for, what's that?
I couldn't think of his name.
I couldn't think, I can't think of his name, but he was prisoner of war, I think, for eight years. And, and he talked about patient back and forth in the small cell that he had, and it was a very inspiring talk. And then, of course, we've already mentioned the Memorial Day Ceremony. I think that was my 12th one. And it's just, it's just good to recognize those members of our country that sacrificed their time, didn't get to sleep in their own beds to make sure that we're safe and free. And so with that, I'm going to close the council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say just a few words?
Yeah, because I have time left over, so go ahead.
Yeah. I just want to acknowledge Lieutenant Laudermilk. She was at my town hall meeting, and I certainly don't want to forget the officers who were there too, that, that are in District One. And then the volunteers, Katie Fuller, Joyce Garner, Audrey Robinson, and Gwen and Alicia, who helped facilitate it.
Okay, now my time is up too.
Oh, Sage Village, oh, Sage Village, folks. Thank you for coming out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And with that, you, but my time is up now, too. All right, go, go, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor. So I, I unfortunately did not acknowledge another member of District Four that passed away, Nanny Wax Pratt, District Four resident, who was the dean of Washington High School and member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. She would have been 84 years old on June 17th. So please close in her honor, Mayor.
Nancy Frat?
Nanny Wax Pratt. Thank you so much, Mayor.
No, that was worth it. Okay. Okay, so we'll close in the name of Nanny Wax Pratt and Sina Fite. With that, we adjourn.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.